Welcome everyone to the August 10th meeting of the Utilities Commission. I'm calling the meeting to order, gavel banging as you can see. Charles, are you on? And I'll tell everybody else who that is in a second.
I'm here. I cannot figure out my video, the camera on Zoom, but I'm here.
So everyone replacing Jim Ruffin, who we will sadly miss is Charles Wilson. The mayor appointed Charles and was approved, I believe, a week ago today. He is going to sit in and as a visitor similar what Alan Younger did, before he joined, visit today and he'll be sworn in in the September meeting. So that said, I think we all, you'll join me in welcoming him sort of as a visitor today. And then, and then next, next month. Mike, Charles, do you want to tell everybody just one minute about yourself?
Sure, I'm with Magnolia Partners, a commercial real estate company. We own a few office buildings in town, including Winston Tower and 370 and 380 Knollwood. I grew up in Winston. I moved back about seven years ago. So for the last several years, I've been pretty involved with Downtown Partnership and getting involved with the Planning Committee there. Just finished up Leadership Winston Salem, which was a great program. I'm excited to be joining and listening in today. And I do have to leave at around two o'clock. I know I'm not voting or anything, but I'll probably just have to leave around there because I've got to run to Durham.
All right. All right. That's, thank you and welcome. Patrice, would you like to call the role?
Sure. Welcome to the commission, Mr. Wilson. I'm Patrice, the Senior Administrative Assistant, well as the Recording Secretary for the Commission meetings. I'm going to, I'm going to call the role. Chairman Randall Tuttle.
Present.
Vice Chair Wesley Curtis.
Present.
Commissioner Harold Day.
Present.
Commissioner Tom Griffin.
Present.
Commissioner Yvonne Hines. Commissioner Yvonne Hines. Commissioner Hugh Jernigan.
Present.
Commissioner Dwayne Long.
Present.
Commissioner Chris Parker.
Present.
Commissioner Donald Stewart.
Present.
Commissioner Alan Younger.
Good to see everybody. I'm present.
And I would say Commissioner Yvonne Hines, is she here?
She was here earlier, but I don't see her now.
It says she's on her iPhone, but she's muted.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrice. Courtney, turn it over to you.
Okay. Welcome everyone. Let me go ahead and share my screen and we'll get started. Okay, everyone can see. Okay, from the nods, I will assume so. So I sent out, or I didn't, Patrice did, sent out the, the meeting details, so we'll follow that. We have welcome and announcements, then water and wastewater update, water and wastewater financial update, the solid waste update. Then we'll present the agenda items and then go over the CIP update. We'll end with that. Before I really dive in, let me go ahead and announce who all from staff is on the call. So you have Courtney Driver, myself, utility director, Damon Decane is the Assistant City Manager, Patrice Glenn, Recording Secretary, Mike Quivisto, Deputy Director, Jan McCarr, Assistant Director, Michael Stover, Assistant Director, Shang Tao Hussman, Capital Projects Engineer, Todd Lewis, Senior Sub Engineer, Gail Kettler and Kyra Boyd with the Communications Team. Then Lisa Saunders, our Chief Financial Officer, Jerry Bates, Purchasing Director, Mary Lena Jensen-Guttmull, Assistant City Attorney, Kurt Bierling, Real Estate Administrator, and Jakir Westbrook, Office of Business Inclusion and Advancement. And I think I got everyone on the, that was on the call. Some announcements, Mr. Tuttle already mentioned this, that we do have a new city-appointed commission member, so we welcome him. Last month, I mentioned our No Wipes and Pipes campaign and I did want to just mention that we have been a finalist in the 2020 E-Source Utility Ad Awards Contest for this, this campaign. So we're really excited about that and our communication and marketing team did a really good job as far as that campaign goes. And then the other thing I just want to mention, we haven't been able to do many public events, but we are going to do virtual City of Winston Salem University and that's going to be September 17. In the past, there's citizens that apply to be a part of this, the City of Winston Salem University. And it's a 12-week course and they go through each week and learn something new or learn about a new department each week. Normally, our week is in late March and so of course with the pandemic, that got canceled. But typically, we have our, our night at the Thomas Water Treatment Plant and we do a show and tell. We bring some of our equipment. We have our jetback that we bring out there. We also show our sewer truck, our camera truck. We also give the class a tour of the Thomas Water Treatment Plant. Unfortunately, we can't do all that this year, but we are moving forward with a virtual presentation. And again, that's on September 17. So one thing that I thought would be interesting, especially since we have a new commission member, is to do, to give the same presentation to the commission that we do to the class. Of course, we won't be able to give it all at one time because it would, it would take too long. But I thought I would break it up into a six-month series. So we'll go over a division out of the department each month. And I am going to start with a little bit of history this month since Mr. Wilson is joining us. And so that, that leads me to my next slide. This, who are we? In June of 2019, we adopted, or I say we, the Utility Commission adopted a strategic plan where we outlined our vision and mission. So I just want to remind the, the commission what those are. And our vision is to be a top-performing utility, proactively safeguarding public health and the environment through a culture of continuous improvement. And our mission is our dedicated team provides quality water, wastewater and solid waste services to the region through responsible use of resources. And our values are that we are committed to meeting the needs of the region through integrity, dedication, quality and stewardship. So the water system and sewer system have been around for many years. It dates back to the 1770s in Old Salem for the water system and then 1880 for the sewer system to serve the Winston Township. Now, of course, we don't have any of those, that infrastructure left, but it just goes to show you that this, the water and sewer system in this area, serving this community, has been around for, for a very long time. A couple of cool pictures that Kyra researched and found. There's a, one on the left shows a section of the water pipe used in Old Salem, wooden pipe. And then on the right, there's the installation of a large pipe near Salem Creek. And this picture was taken in 1955. So as a reminder, we are a city-county agency appointed. The Utility Commission is appointed by both the city council and the county commissioners. They govern, you govern, the, the utilities department. You set the rates and the policies. We are, as far as employees of the department, we are City of Winston Salem employees. The assets and the, any loans that we take are in the City of Winston Salem's name. So the, the council approves the budget and borrowing any money. But other than that, the Utility Commission governs the day-to-day responsibilities of the, the utility department. We're divided into what we call six different divisions. We have administration, water treatment, wastewater treatment, solid waste, utilities field operations and meter services. As I mentioned, we're a joint agency and this merger was, the merger of the city and county water and sewer systems in 1976. We are an enterprise fund, which means that we're not funded by local taxes. We're funded by the water and sewer rates and primarily for the solid waste, your tipping fees if you play for solid waste services. And this picture has all your beautiful faces. We do have, we do need to update it. It has Mr. Ruffin's, he's in this picture. And of course, when we can all get back together, we will need to take a new picture and update that. So one of the primary responsibilities of the Utility Commission is our rates and setting the rates for, for water sewer and solid waste. So it's important to show you and compare, and show you how we compare to other, to our peer utilities. And this is for water and sewer. This is based off 1,200 cubic feet bi-monthly consumption. And you can see how we compare to High Point, Raleigh, Charlotte, Durham and Greensboro. We, we're not the lowest. Greensboro has the lowest rate, but we are very competitive. And I think that's my last slide. I wanted to see if anybody had any, any questions about some of the history of the Utility Commission and what the responsibilities are. Kind of a, a big overview before we, before we move forward. Okay?
I think that's a great idea. Thank you. I think that a little, a little information every meeting is a good idea. Thank you.
Yeah, yes. Thank you. And it's good just to remind, have a, just a quick reminder. Okay. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Stover. So when you're ready.
Good afternoon, commission members. Here's the conveyance dashboard for our permits, plan review permits for this calendar year. So, so far this year, they've issued 28 water and sewer conveyance permits with a total value of $2.7 million. And this next slide will show you the breakdown of mileage between water and sewer. 6.3 miles of water mains have been permitted and 5.0 miles of sewer mains have been permitted. Here's a screenshot of the rainfall for the month of July. You can tell the past three years were kind of in line with the, the previous three years. There's no county in the state that's under drought conditions after last week with a hurricane and a couple of major rain events. And then water production, this is water production for all three water plants. For the month of July, we came in at 41.1 million gallons per day, which is about 0.2 million gallons per day increase over last year. And then this is just a breakdown fiscal year-to-date flows. Right now, at this point in the year, we are above where we were last year and the previous two years and above our five-year average. Collection System Update. This is a summary of our SSOs and our responses from the state. We have not received the reports from May, June or July yet. We did receive the report for April. We received four Notice of Deficiencies, which is, if you remember, is the lowest level of, of actions that gives you other than no action at all. And we received three Notice of Violations, which is one step above that, and zero intend to enforce. Those are where you receive the civil penalties. We didn't receive any of those in April. Here's the SSO per 100-mile chart. We're the first month of this fiscal year. We are, we started off very strong, like we did last year. We're actually slightly below where we were last year. If you recall from last month, this past year, we had the lowest SSO count on record in large part due to the, the success of the CSIP program, which the CSIP Contract A for year five is on your journey today. So we hope that this trend continues through the next couple of months and we, we get down between that two and four SSOs per 100-mile range. Here's the SSOs by aggregated cause. We had four total in the month of July. One, the, the other SSO in orange, that was vandalism-related. We had somebody decided to break into our North Mill Creek construction site and disconnect the bypass pump, which caused an overflow. So we've, we've got the security on that site a little more in check. And then the other three were fog, roots and debris-related.
Hey, Mike, why don't you, hey, Mike, why don't you, just so our new member knows, an SSO is a sinister sewer overflow.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And then this is our cleaning productivity chart. Like I said, this is still first month of the fiscal year. Our scheduled cleaning goal this year has dropped from 23% to 20%. So how that goal was calculated, our, our monthly permit, collection system permit requires us to clean 10% of our system each year. So we are above that every year easily. Our scheduled cleaning goal number varies year to year. Each pipe segment has a cleaning frequency. Some pipes get dirtier than others more frequently. So after a couple of cycles of cleaning each pipe, we can determine what cleaning cycle they need to be on. Some are on a, a two-month clean cycle. Some might be on a six-month or a one-year or a five-year. And after cleaning those a couple of times, you kind of dial that in. And after five, well, four years of this program, we're starting to dial these frequencies in and trying to optimize how much we clean each pipe. And that's why that goal was dropped from 23% down to 20%. We're slightly below that for the month of July, but we're, you know, just starting the fiscal year and getting POs issued for contractors and such and believe that we're going to close that gap in August and September. Now, I believe that was it. Any questions on that?
Mike, I know we've talked about it before, but on the sewer system cleaning, is that mostly for fats, oils and greases or debris or how does that, how do y'all determine that? Or how do you, how's that work?
It's for all of the above. And anything that could be restricting flow, we're trying to clean it.
I guess my question was, I'm sorry, my question was, I guess, is typically what it's most necessary for is, is for those fats, oils and greases, fog?
I would say that's the case. We have seen an increase in wipes and rags over the past three months.
Yeah.
You know, the, the flushable wipes are not really a thing that you can flush them, but you really shouldn't. And Gail and Kyra have done a great job of, you know, with the No Wipes and the Pipes campaign. Unfortunately, not everybody listens to, to those campaigns and we still have an issue. But that's why our cleaning, you know, efficiency is where it is.
Thank you.
Mike, I've got a question. Harold here. Did we get SSOs from this big rain we had last Wednesday and Thursday?
Yes, I'm glad you mentioned that. We had a, a large SSO at the Muddy Creek Wastewater Plant last Thursday night. As I mentioned last month, we, our staff has started the operation acceptance testing at Muddy Creek Plant during the NWH project. They started that last Monday. That's a 30-day test. And that means that the project is to a point where our staff can operate it for 30 days. And if there's no mechanical or operational issues, we accept. You kind of move into substantial policing at that point. Last Thursday night, we had over four inches of rain in a short amount of time, which caused the Muddy Creek Plant to receive flows in excess of 165 million gallons per day at that rate. That plant is rated at 21 MGD. So we were receiving much more flow than that plant can handle. And there was a significant overflow at the splitter box due to some issues over there. We believe, we understand why that occurred. The, the excess rain was a big factor, but there were some other sequencing issues with the stage of the project where NWH cannot do a couple tie-ins until 15 days of operations testing is complete. That would be next week. So we think after the project's complete and after those tie-ins have been made, there shouldn't be any issue. But there was a large spill at Muddy Creek last Thursday night.
And it was, it was large enough, we had to issue a press release. How many gallons was it, Mike? Do you remember?
It was 1.1 million gallons is what that's.
It was pretty significant.
Mike, this is Chris Parker. A comment and a couple of questions. First comment is for Charles's greater glory of knowledge. At the end of the agenda book, we have a list of all the acronyms and what they mean. So you might want to kind of keep that handy as we're going through some of this, just in case words like SSO slip out and we forget to kind of tell you what those mean.
Appreciate that.
Number two is, are we expecting, since that was such a large SSO at the plant, that we're going to get some type of penalty for that? In numbers, my second question is, anything about the earthquake?
So let me tackle the first question first. I can't predict what the state will do. I would imagine, based on recent experience, we will at a minimum get a notice of violation. Due to the large volume, we will likely be required to notify downstream customers or downstream municipalities. And the state tells us who we need to notify and how far downstream we have to do that. So we're waiting on that response from them. And then Gail does a great job of contacting different media downstream to, to post those notices in. So we're waiting on that and then it'll probably take a couple of months for us to get a response from the state. But once we do, we'll share it in the SSO update like we normally do. As for the earthquake, I've been checking the city line calls all day. I was kind of worried about water main breaks, but I don't think we had any at all. So as far as an impact, it kind of had a very low impact on our operation.
Mike, this is Dwayne. Do I understand that, that when all, everything's in place there at that Muddy Creek Station, that we would be able to handle that 160-gallon plus, 160-million gallon plus event?
That is, Courtney, you might want to answer, chime in too. I, I, I would say that's probably still doubtful. These, uh, these projects are designed, they all have a design storm, right? So 165 MGD is likely above our normal design flows. So even if the project was complete, we still would likely have an SSO? Courtney, do you want to jump in on that?
Yeah, I, I think, so as Mike mentioned, the, the amount of rain that we see in a short, in a short duration is well above our design capacity. And because you don't design any of our systems for worst case, you know, 100-year storm events because it just gets too costly. I do think that we might, it's hard to tell, but I think the headwork structure, so the pump station structure, and Shane has a, a picture of it later on in the, in the presentation and I'll show it to you or just call it out. But we've got a dry side and a wet side in this pump station structure. So the dry side obviously needs to stay dry. The wet side can get wet. If we, that, that did flood this past event and it probably would flood again if something like that happened after our project is complete. So it would prevent us from having an SSO because it was contained within the structure. We would still have some, some, some damage because some of the equipment and instruments might have been impacted if it got, the levels got as high as they did this time, but it would be minimal and we would have prevented maybe having a, an SSO where, you know, spilled on the ground. It would have been contained within the, within the structure itself.
Sure. Okay.
Oh, Mike, this is Wesley. So it sounds like, it sounds like the vandals knew exactly what they were doing. I mean, is that, is that the case? I mean, in that they knew specifically what to get to, what to break to divert things?
Mr. Curz, I, I really don't have all the details on, on that. I do know when the contractor left for the day, the bypass pumps were set up. They were functional. They were pumping wastewater. And when they showed up the next day, it was evident that somebody had came in and disabled those pumps.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that is really all I know.
Okay.
We have set up, and Shane can confirm this, I'm pretty sure we've set up security fencing. And there is somebody from the contractor readily available within five minutes, all hours of the day, to check on those pumps. And there's dollars, there's automatic dollars. If there's an issue with the pump, they have a list and it starts calling people. And, and you can put a large number of, of contacts on this dollar. And if the first person doesn't answer, it keeps going down the list. So we've got some safeguards in place, you know.
Okay.
To combat that issue.
Are there cameras there?
Yes.
I don't believe there's cameras.
I thought they put up some cameras, but I can double check.
Th, th, this is on a large outfall, so I don't know how close power's available. We could check and let you know next, next month.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, Cordes, are you ready?
And thank you, Courtney. Let's talk a little bit. Good afternoon, everyone. Want to recap the FY20 water and wastewater revenues. We showed you this last month, but we've got a firmer number now. So just to recap, our revenues did drop off in May and June below the projected budget. We came in at the $115 million mark, which was in line with our revised projections for fiscal year-end related to the pandemic, but under the 120 million that was budgeted for FY20. So for FY21, we've started off billing just under $10 million in July. The budget for FY21 is lower than FY20. The revenue budget for FY21 is, is just over 111 million. And as I, I mentioned, the, the revenue budget for FY20 was 120 million. We've been talking about the impacts, the impacts of executive orders 124 and 142. They were, they became effective March 31st and expired on July 29th. They prohibited the termination of service for non-payment as well as billing or collecting late fees and penalties. They mandated six-month payment plans for customers who needed them at the ti, at the date of the expiration. We want to let you all know that as of right now, we have not reinstituted terminations for non-payment. We're working on a plan with our customer service folks and some local nonprofits. Most other larger municipal, municipal and county utilities are holding off on reinstituting terminations for non-payments, we think until at least the fall. And we're currently anticipating reinstitu, reinstituting our late fees and penalties on October 1st as hopefully a way to provide an impetus for folks to come in and start paying any, any delinquent bills that they may have. And then just for the, what we've seen from a financial impact from the executive orders, which ran for eight, from April 1st through the end of July, we've waived $1.3 million in late fees and penalties. Currently have over 14,000 past due accounts and a total of just under 3.5 million in past due billings compared to, at this time last year, we had just under 2 million in past due billings. Our delinquency rate is at 23% compared to 11% at this time last year. But, but just to note, the delinquency rate was at 25% in June of this year. So it's gone down slightly. So, yeah, we just want to kind of recap that and let you know where, where we stand. And we'll, we'll keep bringing you this information because it is, it is very fluid. And just wanted to pause here to see if anybody had any questions or comments about.
Mike, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Are you anticipating to put whatever? Are you anticipating to put whatever plan that you come up with in terms of the fees that have already been waived, are you going to put that in play October the 1st? Or what are you anticipating?
So the fees that have already been waived basically are fees that we won't be able to collect from the, from the late fee and penalty side of things. For folks who have delinquent balances, we are not able to charge late fees on the delinquent balances that occur during the duration of the executive orders. So we would just start charging the, the late fees that we would implement on October 1st would be for any late fees that were incurred after the expiration of the executive order. Hopefully that answers your question, but maybe not.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, let, let me try to clarify that. So what you're saying is, is starting August 1st, we are going to start reinstituting late fees and penalties, but until October 1st, we won't be actually cutting off services?
Well, our intent right now is to wait to start collecting late fees on October 1st, and then kind of continue to evaluate what, when the best time to reinstitute terminations for non-payment might be, because we know that there are still a, a large number of folks unemployed that are having difficulties paying their bills. So as I mentioned, some of, we were having conversations with some, some nonprofits and some other folks to see where we could potentially help direct people who are having issues paying their bills. And also, we want to see what other folks are doing, and we want to have some more conversations internally about, you know, what, what does that look like when we do potentially reinstitute terminations for non-payment? Do we, do we look at the folks with the largest balances and try to work back from there, et cetera?
So are you projecting about another $650,000 in waived late fees and penalties for this two-month period?
That is the likely scenario. It would be about half of what we just saw for the four months of the executive order.
And how do we come up with October 1st?
Well, that is, part of that is due to our billing system, having, having, trying to find the ability within our billing system to differentiate what was billed during the executive order between what was, and what was billed after. So if we take October 1st, it's, it's two, it's two months after the end of the executive order, which should give us clearance from a monthly and bi-monthly billing to not be charging any late penalties on fees that were incurred during the duration of the executive order.
And that's what you're saying occurring in Mecklenburg and other large municipalities?
We've had some conversations with those, with those folks, and there's not a lot of movement towards reinstituting late fees or terminations for, for non-payment that we've seen in the conversations we've had with the larger utilities across the state at this point.
Mike, Harold Day.
Yes, sir.
Compared to last year's business, how much money did we write off in a normal business year, non-collected money? You know?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me, Mr. Day, but we didn't write off a whole lot more last year than we did the, the prior year, because what we're, what we're typically, what we write off is accounts that have been, that have been closed for a certain amount of time. And we, we've done the best that we could to try to get anything out of those folks.
So normally, we get what we collect 98% of what's owed us in a good year?
I would typically, I, I, I'm not sure what our collection rate is right now, but it, I would say it's actually probably higher than, been higher than that in the past.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So if any, if there aren't any other questions or comments, and someone, you, you have questions that, that come up over the course of the next month, oh, go ahead.
I, I'm sorry, I had one other question. So the, the late fees we waived so far were over 1.3 million, but we've also got past due bills that have gone up to almost three and a half million. So we're looking at approaching 5 million. Are we, I guess I'm concerned about the past due bills. At what point are we going to start to work on trying to deal with that?
So, Mr. Griffin, we're, we are working on those leases, folks are, are helping us with working on accounts that are, that are past due. And I think, as we've kind of mentioned in the past, we're looking, as long as someone has an active account with us, then we're hoping that over the course of the next six to 12 months, we'll be able to recoup any outstanding balances. The, the real issue comes in with folks that close their accounts and, and move on, that we have a much harder time collecting. So I would say, you know, we're sitting at 3.5 million in past due billings. At this time last year, we were at 2 million. We're, you know, 1.5 million worse off than we were last year. And once we start, you know, making more, getting some folks engaged in payment plans, we're hoping that we're going to be able to start whittling down that past due amount.
That, that was, that was my next question. When, when are we going to come out with a, a, a plan for these folks?
Very soon. We've been, like, as I mentioned, we've been working with, internally, we've been working with all of our affected departments and are planning to have something out here within the next week or so, just to get the, the customer base to make contact with us, set up payment plans, and try to keep their balances from, from increasing any further without getting in touch with us and, and trying to find a way to pay, pay things down.
Okay.
Hey, Mike, it seems like you've got enough questions that maybe before, or once we devise our plans and before October 1st, we might need to just revisit this in a future meeting. You know, giving our customers plenty of time to get payments that just before we institute something, it might be good to review it with the commission.
Will do, will do.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Jan?
Thank you, Courtney. Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, everyone. I've got a brief update on tonnage and facility operations. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the solid waste item that's on your agenda, item number 10, this month. So at Haynesville Road landfill, we took in 24,649 tons in the month of July, the first year, the first month of the new fiscal year. And that puts us ahead of the budget, but a little bit behind last year. So this chart shows you the budget with the seasonal variation built into it. And even with the added tonnage there because of the summer variation, we're still over 1,000 tons above the, the budget target for the month of July. So we, we're happy with that. We've got a strong start to the new fiscal year, at, at least at this facility. Then if you move on to the next one, Courtney, it's a little bit of a less strong start to the Old Salisbury Road landfill, which is the construction and demolition facility. So we took in 3,598 tons at that site, which is a little below the budget and certainly below last year's July tonnages. You will remember, though, that last year was a fairly exceptional year. We had some very high months. So we're not surprised that it's below last year, but we would rather see it hit the budget target, of course. Now, does this indicate a long-term turn down in the, in the C and D stream? We have no idea, but we'll watch that carefully as, as the year progresses. So any questions about tonnage? We can move on to item number 10. If, if not. So that item on your agenda is to recommend the renewal of the contract with our yard waste processing contractor, Wallace Farm Incorporated. They've been the vendor for yard waste processing since 2014, and when they were selected as part of a competitive request for proposals process. The services they provide include grinding and removing yard waste, composting leaves at Form 52, and hauling leaves and yard waste between our facilities and to their composting operation in Davie County. It's been a good partnership. We, they're uniquely qualified largely because of the large permitted facility that they operate. It provides a reliable outlet for the waste that we produce, and they've been able to handle large amounts of waste, even in years where we had storm events and exceptional quantities of, of yard waste. And it is a sustainable solution. Everything is reused as mulch or compost, and nothing is incinerated or burned as had been the case in the past. So we, the tipping fee would remain at $32 per ton. We can absorb the new price structure, those new operating costs over the three-year phase-in that's described in, in the item. And the tipping fee would stay at $32 per ton. I've shown the Greensboro and High Point tip fees just as a little bit of context. It may not be a totally fair comparison because their programs are different from ours. But we're certainly on the low end of the tri-an range of tip fees. And the final slide that I have shows a flow chart, just for those of you that aren't aware or need a reminder of how the waste moves around within the community. The, the light blue boxes are the facilities that we operate, Form 52 and Overdale. The dark blue box is a leaf transfer point that's operated by and for the sanitation department. So they drop leaves at a central location because it's more convenient for them. And then Wallace Farm transports leaves to Forms 52 so that we can do the giveaway up there in the spring. And then Wallace Farm also grinds and transfers the yard waste from the two facilities that we operate through their site in Davie County. So I think that's everything that we had to present on solid waste today, but we're happy to answer any questions that people have.
Jan, this is Chris.
Right.
When do we make the decision about renewing a contract or service agreement versus putting it out to bid and seeing what else is available?
You know, when we did the RFP in 2014, it had been 15 years or more perhaps since we had done that. So we felt like it was important to do it at that point. And the other vendor was actually getting out of the business. So that was an important point to do that. But at that time, we were going to do a 15-year contract then. So we would still be in the middle of it at this point. Because it was a new vendor and Wallace Farm was bringing their new facility online, we decided to do a five-year with a 10-year option, or an option to renew for a number 10. But it is the kind of service that we, you would typically see a longer contract time because of all the investment in equipment and capital that has to be made. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it also, there's not a lot of options out there either right now.
I'm really unaware of any other vendor that would have the capacity to, to manage our waste stream in this manner.
The, the option, the option would be do it ourselves, and we're talking about a huge amount of money.
Right. That would be a big investment. And really, the markets for the, the amount of material that we generate, it might be difficult to find an end user to, to make sure the place has, the material has a place to go.
It feels prohibitively expensive.
You mean this pricing or doing it ourselves?
Doing it ourselves.
Right, right. Well, Greensboro, you saw their tip fees, $40. And, and that reflects the cost of maintaining the grinders, and it's very labor-intensive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we will present the agenda item. Mike, you ready?
Yes, thanks, Courtney. I will start with item two, which is the operations item, consideration of resolution authorizing execution of various agreements regarding proposed water and/or sanitary sewer improvements to be installed within various developments. This month, we have six developer agreements with a total of $226,030 for water and $360,620 for sewer. Moving on to start the finance items with item three, which is consideration of a resolution authorizing acquisition of easements by deed or condemnation for Phase Three of the Systemwide Sewer Rehabilitation Project. It is necessary that the City of Winston-Salem acquire easements for Phase Three of the Systemwide Sewer Rehabilitation Project to meet the schedule for this project and ensure that access is available when needed. Authorization for acquisition by deed or condemnation is requested. Just to note, there was a community meeting in the Ardmore area held for this project due to the location of easements and potential property impacts. We had about 15 property owners attend that meeting and did not have any, a lot of feedback from the property owners at that time. The real estate staff finds these appraisals consistent with other easement acquisitions for comparable properties and recommends, recommends acquisition of these easements in the amount of $59,175.
Hey, Mike, it's Chris Parker. When would you estimate that project would start in Ardmore?
Shane, do you have any idea what the timeline is for that?
Um, well, we will be looking to acquire easements this upcoming month if this item is approved. And so it could be a couple, I'd give it around probably closer to Christmas time.
So has, has there any, been any contractors out there, like, putting up line, lines showing where the easements are going to be in these people's backyards?
I don't believe so. I think HGR hired surveyors to go out there, but I don't believe they stayed there or anything.
But during the community meeting, the homeowners were able to see where these, where this construction would be in their backyards?
Um, yeah, we provided a map, overall map of the type of work we proposed to do over there. So there's a couple of aerial lines that we're replacing and some pipe bursting. And so we showed them a map and they can kind of tell where their property was relative to where the work was going to be. Does that answer your question, Mr. Parker?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item four is consideration of a resolution authorizing acquisition of easements by deed or condemnation for the Water Main Improvements Project. On May 11th, 2020, the commission authorized acquisitions for the Water Main Improvements Project, which included $19,625 for Renaissance Child Care, Inc. It has now been determined that trees and shrubs will be taken, which were not in the original offer, and the appraisal has been revised with an updated value of $27,375, which is an increase of $7,750 over the original offer. Real estate staff finds this revised appraisal consistent with other easement acquisitions of comparable properties and recommends acquisition of easements in the amount of $27,375. Item five is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for the Water Main Improvements Project. This project will address needed water distribution system improvements in areas of Kernersville, Lewisville, and Winston-Salem. Bids were received on July 24th, 2020 for the project with Ramey, Inc., the Low River, at 20, at $2,130,750. Ramey has agreed to the subcontract goals established for this project, which are 5% minority and 5% woman-owned businesses. And it is recommended that a contract for the Water Main Improvements Project be awarded to Ramey, Inc. in the estimated total bid amount of $2,130,750 and that $107,000 be available for contingency if needed. The engineer's estimate for the project was $2,513,000. Item six is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for water service renewal and sewer service renewal or repair. There's a need to renew water services and repair or renew sewer services at various locations within Winston-Salem and South County. Discover that this contract will involve water service line renewals, three-quarter inch through two-inch, which include the complete removal of the existing service line and replacement with a new service line. Sewer service repairs or renewals shall include repair or damaged or leaking sewer service pipe along any point from the connection Sewer service repairs or renewals shall include repair or damaged or leaking sewer service pipe along any point from the connection at the public sewer main to the sewer cleanout at the right way. Bids for the project were received on July 24th with Classic City Mechanical, Inc., the low bidder, at $272,280. The engineer's estimate for the project was $495,750. Classic City Mechanical, Inc. submitted affidavit B to self-perform 100% of the contract work. The MWB goals established were 0% MBE and 0% WBE due to lack of available trades associated with the project. Terms of the bid reserve the right to extend the contract for as many as three additional annual periods for a potential total estimated contract value of $189,120. Staff has checked references for the low bidder, and based on the positive feedback that was received, recommends approval.
Great question, Mike.
Yes.
When we say that the MWB goals were established at 0%, was it our MWB committee that established them?
I believe so. Jerry, do you know?
Jeri, Jakira, is she you hear on the line?
Yes, I'm trying to start my video.
All right. I believe this one.
Okay.
Go ahead.
An item was brought to the commission on January 13th requesting goals to be established at the goals that we we have at zero and zero. Given the the type of work that was involved was limited, if if any at all, in regards to being able to subcontract. So it was the it was the commission that approved the zero and zero goals.
All right, I I remember that. Just let the record show that I was the one who voted against that.
Mike, if I could ask a question about item five?
Yes, this is Chris. Sure.
I'm wondering, and this is kind of an engineering question, I guess, is we're talking about all this work we're gonna get do, and a lot of it's due to some low pressure. Are there gonna be pressure fluctuations in these neighborhoods? Is there doing this kind of work? And if if so, is that something that we need to notify the homeowners and businesses about? And I just say in the sense that I would hate for my fire alarm system, sprinkler system to go into alarm because water pressure is fluctuating. Or if you're a homeowner and you start having pressure fluctuations that impact things like your hot water heater.
I'll answer that, Mr. Parker. The static pressure shouldn't change. They're gonna be same elevation, same pressure zone. So the static pressure shouldn't change. What will change is the fire flows and the water quality. A lot of these are dead-end streets and dead-end water lines, and we're just doing short hydraulic connections from one dead end to maybe another or to another pipe. So you kind of have a circular flow in waters circulating, and you don't have stagnant water. But you your static pressure shouldn't change.
Okay, so no change in static pressure. Thank you, correct.
Okay, that's a good segue to item seven, which is consideration of resolution awarding a contract for check valve installations. The 2015 Water Distribution System Master Plan recommended a pressure zone, a boundary shift to address low water pressure in the old rural Hall Road and Akron Drive area. The adjustment to the pressure zone boundary requires installation of new check valves on Cap Street, Dove Street, and Ada Avenue. Bids were opened on June 16th. The two lowest bidders, J. Smith Civil LLC and Evans Construction and Utility, Inc. submitted subcontracting goals that were less than those established for the project. And the internal MWB committee determined that both bidders did not make good faith efforts, deeming their bids non-responsive. The third lowest bidder, Gilbert Engineering Company, submitted subcontract subcontracting goals of 2.3% with minority and 3.2% with women woman-owned businesses exceeding the established goals. It is therefore recommended that the contract for check valve installations be awarded to Gilbert Engineering Company in the estimated amount of $145,961.
So Mike, I think Mr. Evans reached out to staff protesting the determination of the committee. Just wanted to follow up and see if there's any other news from that protest.
I I can, Jakira, and I don't know if you have, you might know more of where the what the status is on that. We have responded to the the vendor, the contractor. But I don't think there's anything else really to update, other than we have responded with our with our stance on that.
Yeah, Courtney, that's correct. Yeah, and we don't have any other update besides that. We we provided a response to Evans on today.
Okay.
So so I don't know if I missed an email or something. So what was the protest they were saying? Is this that they were?
He just he copied me, Alan, as the chair. So he was basically saying that, you know, we we did a, well, Jakira can explain it better than I can. I'll be quiet.
It was that the bids were certified, and Jerry can probably provide you more detail than I can. But the bids were certified, and there was some language about unit prices being used. And so Granco contested, and they they I'll I'll let Jerry provide you with a response.
Jerry, this is this is Courtney. Jerry, you can jump in. I what happened was they were contesting the score of the good faith effort. So you know, there's there's if you don't meet the goals, you can still be qualified for the to receive the project, to be awarded the project if you, under the good faith effort, receive 115 out of 180 points. And they the the contractor received, I think, 109 points. And so they were contesting how those points were given and, you know, who, you know, the points associated with certain things, with certain line items. And and that's really what they were contesting was the was the amount of points that they received for the good faith effort.
Okay, thanks for confirming.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, thanks for confirming that. I I used to serve on the MWB advisory committee. And in general, my attitude is going to be that the the goals that are established are established after that the committee establishes after consulting with staff about what is likely to be, could be met. And sometimes there are general contractors who don't go as far as they could in order to try to meet the goals. And so when when I see really low goals, they're better than zero, but they're still pretty low. The goals that we tried to get to are are higher than a lot of these that we're seeing. And I know a lot of times contractors or general contractors say, there's nobody who can do this. Well, there generally are people who could do that type of work, but there might need to be a little bit more work done on their part to make it happen. So I'm not gonna say that anybody's wrong. I'm I'm just gonna say that I generally want to see us, the city, and the commission, as well as the contractors that we work with, work a little harder to expand who they're working with so that the goals could be met.
Correct, and that's why the good faith effort process, the apparatus, is in place to allow general contractors to show us or to demonstrate the efforts in which they try to meet the goal.
Got it. Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so as you here mentioned earlier, our we we did respond, our city attorney did respond. And Ken Milllett, which is the director of Office of Inclusion and Advancement. And so at this point, there's no other update to that, the contractor contesting those.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item eight, which is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for chemical root control. Chemical root control treatment and sanitary sewer lines is needed to kill the root growth present in the wastewater collection system, inhibit regrowth of roots, and avoid damage to overland vegetation and wastewater treatment processes. A request for proposals was advertised to provide unit pricing for an estimated 185,000 linear feet of chemical root control with Duke's Root Control, Inc. offering the only proposal prior to the July 9th submission deadline. An evaluation panel of six staff members reviewed the proposal, and based upon the evaluation panel's assessment, it is recommended that a contract for chemical root control for the unit prices offered in RFP be awarded to Duke's Root Control, Inc. in the estimated annual amount of $279,982. The quantity of pipe to be treated is 174,800 linear feet, based on the unit prices in the in RFP. Duke's Root Control has provided this service since 2015. Terms of the RFP reserve the right for the commission to extend the service contract for as many as two additional 12-month periods for a potential total estimated contract value of $839,946. Staff recommends approval. Item nine is consideration of a resolution awarding a contract for meter boxes and lids. Bids were received August 3rd for an annual contract to purchase meter boxes and lids to upgrade existing infrastructure to city Winston-Salem standards during the advanced metering infrastructure project. Core and Maine LP was the low bidder at $918,950. Terms of the bid reserve the right for the commission to extend this contract for as many as four additional 12-month periods for a potential total estimated contract value of $4,594,750, as staff recommends approval. Item 10 is consideration of resolution of resolution approving and extension to the yard waste processing agreement with Wallace Farm, Inc. Ms. McCord presented this item earlier. Just for clarification, the estimated annual cost of these services in FY '21 is $994,925, based on previous quantities of material managed. This in the sanitation department funds approximately $253,506 of the estimated annual cost for processing and transportation of leaves. Item 11 is consideration of a resolution requesting MWB goals to be set below the 10% minimum goal for Phase Three of the large water meter replacement and rehabilitation project. The city's internal MWB committee met to identify subcontracting opportunities for this project. After reviewing the scope of work, identifying the relative availability of MWB firms, and discussing the project specifications, it was determined that the subcontracting opportunities are nominal. Based on the cost estimate, a minimal a minimal amount of concrete and demolition work exists for potential subcontracting opportunities. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the city's internal MWB committee that the MWB participation goals be set at 4% MBE and 2% WBE for the project. Item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving an engineering agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. of the Carolinas for year five of the Collection System Improvement Program. Mr. Stover mentioned this earlier. HDR has been providing program management services for the Collection System Improvement Program since 2016. Since that time, the EPA has closed the notice of violation case related to Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities. And the system experienced a record low number of sanitary sewer overflows in FY '20. A scope of services for year five has been developed from the CSIP roadmap prepared by utility staff and HDR, and it's been broken into two contracts, A and B, due to the unknown financial impacts related to the COVID-19 pandemic. The award today is for Contract A, with the expectation that Contract B will be presented to the commission for a word midway through the fiscal year. The fee for Contract A was negotiated to $2,498,000 and is consistent with other pricing for services of this nature. The entire year five CSIP scope of service includes the following: Program Management Services, Operational Optimization, Condition and Capacity Assessment, Capital Improvement Plan Development and Prioritization, Design and Construction Administration Services, and Staff Augmentation Support. Staff recommends approval of an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. of the Carolinas for year five, Contract A of the CSIP, in the not-to-exceed amount of $2,498,000. Moving on to our our last item, which is item 13, our Planning and Policy. Consideration of a resolution authorizing execution of an NC WaterWorn Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement. NC WaterWorn is a voluntary water and wastewater agency response network, which consists of utilities committed to helping each other conduct response and recovery operations during water and wastewater emergencies, be it the exchange of personnel, equipment, materials, supplies, and other industry-related resources. Members elect whether to participate in a in a particular response and recovery operation on a case-by-case basis. The network can be utilized in times of crisis, even without a disaster declaration. During a declared disaster, NC WaterWorn integrates with the state's Emergency Operations Center. Membership in NC WaterWorn is a key element in increasing Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities resilience and ability to recover from disasters that could potentially affect the operation. And this framework also allows our utility to assist other utilities across the state in their time of need and provides an overall assistance framework that strengthens strengthens our state's overall ability to recover from large disasters. The agreement allows for members to be reimbursed by the recipient of the assistance for personnel, equipment, and material supply costs incurred while providing aid and assistance during the specified period of assistance. Staff recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the Utilities Director to execute the North Carolina Water and Wastewater Agency Response Network Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement for water and wastewater utilities. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Courtney or Shane. Courtney, you can join.
I just I just wanted to add, I've been involved in in several instances with similar agreements with between municipalities memorandum of agreements during especially during disasters, tornadoes, floods, hurricanes, when sister city people have shown up. And I've always been amazed at how much they were appreciated. And even more amazed that the people, the workers showing up to do these to help out, the pride and the sense of satisfaction they got doing this. So it's it's like a really win-win thing. It's a really important thing to have, and even with the hope that we never have to use something like that. But thank you.
Mike, Harold?
Yes, sir.
Got a question back on item number nine.
Yes, sir.
Meter boxes and lids?
Yes, sir.
I know that we're gonna proceed on with this electronic meters. Have we ever got a price on the interstructure, what we're gonna have to receive all these signals from yet?
So the the radio network is part is was part of the our 20-year our 20-year agreement with them. Census is providing that the the network is part is part of that. We are we are not, we're paying that off over paying for that over 20 years for them to install and maintain and update.
So we we who is gonna monitor this system when we're putting these meters in the ground? That's my question.
So it'll be so part of that responsibility will lie with the vendor, Census, and part of that responsibility will lie with us, depending on what 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 piece of the system we're talking about. But we will be able to see, you know, the network performance data whenever at our at our leisure.
But my question back is, this we I think last month we voted $10 million on this first phase of these meters. Does that include the monitoring system of the interstructure, how it's gonna be read?
It's it 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 include Census is going to be installing the system during that time. But all of that those costs for the software and the network are it's a network as a service and software as a service. So we'll be paying a a fee per meter for both of those as the meters are installed.
So the people who are installing the meters gonna install the network receiving system also?
Basically, Census is yes, is over that entire project. Basically census is yes, is over that entire project installing the network. And they're responsible for managing the installation contractors who are going to change out the meters as well.
So so that's ten million dollars we voted on to go ahead and start. That's going includes when they they put them in the ground. They're going to have a receiving system already that that we can network watching it.
Okay, that's correct.
Mike, thank you so much for that, as is our. Practice since Zoom meetings began, I'd like to suggest, or I'd love for a motion to have a consent agenda considered. However. Before asking for that, are there any of these thirteen agenda items that any of the commission members would like to pull? To vote on separately? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve agenda items.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chairman. I just couldn't get to mute fast enough.
Okay.
Number six and number eleven.
Number six and number eleven, you'd like to consider individually is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
Understood. I Alan, may I take that as a motion to approve agenda items one through thirteen, accepting six and eleven consent?
I so move.
It entertains second for that.
Second. Chris Parker.
Any discussion on? That motion, which is consent agenda except for six and eleven. Hearing none, we're going to do roll call vote. So Mr. Curtis, aye or nay?
Aye.
Mr. Day.
Abstain.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Hines. Ms. Hines. Mr. Jernigan.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Stewart might be muted muted. I can see you. Give me a thumbs up if you are in Boe. Thumbs up. All right. I don't know if the lawyers will take that, but I'll take it. Mr. Younger. Mr. Younger.
Aye.
Did I miss anybody?
Ms. Hines is available now.
Ms. Hines, yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Patrice, unless you tell me differently, that motion passes. Now for agenda item number six. I would entertain a motion. Mr. Parker, this is a finance committee item. I would entertain a motion from you. I'm scrolling to it as well.
Mr. Parker, you're muted.
Thank you, Courtney. Okay, item number six, the. Finance council brings forward for approval Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities needs a new. To renew water services and repair or renew sewer services at various locations within Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. There were three bidders. Classic City Mechanical at two seventy-two, two eighty. North State Water and Sewer at four forty-three, eight twenty-five. And Ramey at four seventy-one, oh fifty. However, the lowest bidder Classic City Mechanical submitted. Affidavit B to self-perform a hundred percent of the contract work. In the MWBE goals established were zero MW. MBE and zero percent WBE due to lack of available trades. It is recommended the contract for water service renewal and sewer service renewal repair be awarded to Classic City Mechanical. The lowest responsive responsible bidder meeting specifications. In the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Move for approval.
We have a motion. May we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion? Alan, could you address why you wanted this poll particularly?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. In general, I'm not in favor of reducing. The MWBE goals and particularly not in favor of reducing them to zero. I think that, I mean, I understand that it may be hard for general contractors to find. Contractors who do certain things. But I don't. And if that is the case and a goal can't be met, that's one thing, but I don't like the idea of reducing a goal. And saying, okay, we agree that's hard to meet otherwise, because I think we need to play a role in in pushing us to be better at finding. People who can do different types of work who are either MBE or WBE.
I understand that Jerry, Jerry or Courtney, a point of clarification, if if. If this agenda item six does not pass, what happens?
Jerry, you're on mute. Do you want to handle that? So so for this one, we're approving the contract. I know Jerry, you can jump in. We're not approving to set the goal lower. Those were approved in a different item, but. I'm not exactly sure how we would, if we would reject to go back, but I did want to point out that even if the goals hadn't been set lower. Or at zero, zero. The contractor did submit affidavit B, which means that they can self-perform. And that's that is something that a contractor can do. And and not have to meet the goals.
Yeah, right. They can execute affidavit B legally. I would go ahead and tell you not that it won't matter, but. Two of the bidders submitted affidavit B and one bidder submitted zero M, zero W. One thing that I didn't mention during this. Original discussion is that this project was is essentially an on-call, which makes it even more difficult. For MWBEs to get interested in it, become available at the moment that we have the requirement for the service. So it does make it more difficult.
But my question is, if 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 this is not approved, would we then rebid?
We would reject these bids and rebid.
Well, but let me. But we, the goals have been set at zero and zero, so I don't think we're going to get other bids with the same situation.
Can I just jump in? I think that. I think there is a, I think there's a bigger discussion again, I guess, that we as a commission need to have about this. Because I would like to have us all kind of on one accord about how we approach it and how we look at it. But we do that that conversation really needs to happen in conjunction with the with the other review committees, because, I mean. We rely on them to really know or have the pulse on what's there and what's available. So that we can be confident that what we approve is achievable. So I think there's a bigger discussion that we as a committee have to have regarding this. In in concept is, I think where Jerry is headed is that in in concept, or Alan, where Alan is headed in concept. Just no zero period. I mean, there's got to be somebody out there at least potentially have it there as a carrot so that people will try to. Make the effort to try to reach out to to do that. In this case, we've already voted zero, zero. I mean, so that's a done deal. So at this point, certainly I'll be voting to support it, but I do think we need to have a bigger discussion about it as a as a commission.
Any other discussion on this agenda item number six? All right, everybody, get your unmute buttons ready because I'm calling your names again. I'm going to do a little faster this time. Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Today.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
There you go, Ms. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan, Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Younger.
No.
Understood. Thank you. That motion passes consideration. Mr. Parker, would you make a motion for agenda number eleven?
Item eleven, thank you. Consideration of a resolution requesting MWBE goals to be set below the ten percent minimum goal for phase three of the large. Water meter replacement rehabilitation project. The city's internal MWBE committee met to identify subcontracting opportunities. For this project after reviewing the scope of work, identifying the relative availability of MWBE firms. Discussing the project specs, it was determined the subcontracting opportunities are nominal. It is the recommendation of the city's internal MWBE committee that the MWBE participation goals. Be set at four percent MBE and two percent WBE. Move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Any discussion? Okay, scrolling back up to my list of members. I know that Mr. Curtis is first. Mr. Curtis.
You got it, yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Younger. And Mr. Younger.
No.
Understood. Thank you. Agenda item eleven passes.
Commissioner, I've got, yes. Sorry, this is Marilena. Sorry to interject. Just for the sake of the record, the commissioner who voted by giving the thumbs up earlier on the night. Since they can be heard now, if they could just give us that for the record, saying that they vote in the affirmative for that one agenda item, even though we did have the six votes and the the motion passed.
Mr. Stewart, please say yes. Thank you. Thanks, Marilena.
Thank you.
I knew the lawyers would come right into me.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean it the second time. Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us straight. Mr. Curtis, Mr. Younger, I might reach out to you about the discussion or about the broader discussion that Mr. Curtis suggested, if that's okay.
That sounds great.
Cool. I think Courtney, are we going to Shane?
Yeah. Let me get back on the screen here. Okay, Shane, you're up.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be going over the CIP update this afternoon. So for Muddy Creek. Solid influence pumping station. The functional acceptance testing was performed on July twenty-fourth. That's a forty-eight hour test to see if the equipment works. And there were only minor issues. We're currently accepting. Influent wastewater from the seventy-eight inch Muddy Creek line and the fifty-four inch South Fork line. They are flowing into the new Headworks Influent Pump Station structure and receiving preliminary treatment now. And as Mike stated, we started the operations acceptance testing and the testing period is thirty days. And here you can see the picture that Courtney had mentioned. It's to the left is the Headwork Influent Pump Station structure and. The little structures on the right is the older scrubber vessels.
And I'll just add here, this this building that you see in the picture, it's fifty or sixty foot deep into the ground. So the pump, so you know, at the bottom level and that the pumps are on your dry side. And when I was talking about a dry side and a wet side, you've got your pumps on the dry side of that building. And then while separating them from the wet side, which is where your bar screens are at. And for those that went on the tour at Elledge. It's a very similar setup. And so if you remember the bar screens. At Elledge where there's that big rate that goes down several several feet. Very similar, and that's considered the wet side. So if we have a. A large rain event, it's just going to flood up through there and that side is going to become wet. But if it's all contained within the building, we would avoid an SSO, sanitary sewer overflow. We would just have some pretty significant cleanup on that side of the building. And that's what we had in this situation. But let me add, we had that inside the building and then. Mike Stover behind the building, we're going to kind of see, I don't know if you ever seen my cursor, isn't that the junction box right back here? Where I'm pointing? Isn't it back here somewhere?
Closer to the right. You see the metal building about an inch to the right.
Okay, right here.
Little bit further to the right. There you go.
So there was a junction box here and that's where the actual overflow thing where it was filling out onto the ground, the million gallons that we had.
Courtney, are we going to get? Since we're in testing on this thing, we're going to get an update on the. Contractor and the issues with the contractor sometime soon.
Yes, we can, yeah, we can do that.
Can I continue?
Yeah.
Idles row lift station, the preliminary walkthrough has been completed. The water line installation is set to begin sometime this month and this project should be completed by the end of September. Kerner's metal lift station, this is a newer project with the notice to proceed was January, January, sorry, January twentieth of this year. All civil work such as the cast-in-place, concrete valve vault. The concrete pass regenerator and the four-ton crane has been completed. They'll start working on the mechanical work such as installing the piping, pumps and valves. Roswell lift station, this is also one of our newer projects started in February of this year. The wet well has been installed and they are still working on clearing the easement and continue to install erosion control measures. And here you can see the progress map. Everything in green has been completed and the yellow. Portions where they're they will be working in the next thirty days. North Mill Creek, we started this project in February and should be completed by August of two thousand twenty-one. We're continuing to clear the easement and installing the erosion control measures. The bypass system is in place and they're continuing with the pipe installation. I did want to clarify. Mr. Curtis's question about the camera. So Mr. Mike Stover was right, it's there is no power out there, but I believe the contractor was looking into. The the smaller trail or hunting cameras, which I think I don't have one, but I think they're battery operated. Not sure if you want me to follow up on that some more?
So the it sounds like the contractor is looking into it because they they don't want to have an issue again.
Yeah, I think it's mostly to just record for evidence.
Yeah.
Okay. And here you can see the progress map for this for North Mill Creek. They are still at the very bottom left of the map where it's in green is completed and the. Yellow portion is the next thirty days. Muddy L H rehab, this project is on track to be completed by September. They've finished rebuilding the gravity belt thickener number three and number one, and those are both in operation at Elledge now. They're rebuilding gravity belt thickener number two at Elledge. And this is our old Salem Infrastructure Improvement Project. They're continuing working on water on Main Street and Brooks Town. And the water valve replacement at the intersection of Academy and Salt Street. And they are continuing the sewer work on Academy Street. Questions?
Thank you. So that that concludes our presentation. So that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions or comments that anyone has?
I'd like a copy of the presentation, as usual.
Yes, yes, sir, absolutely.
Any, I presume, Courtney, we have no visitors?
No.
Okay, so I can't really, we're not going to get any visitors. We're really interested in bringing anything before the commission. Any of the commission members have anything addition they'd like to say?
Harold here, I'd like to mention, I had a firsthand experience with our crews last week with the water leak at my shop outside. We've got some good dedicated people that know what they're doing. I kept on eyeing them as I was going back and forth and they've done a great job and they had it patched and ready to go asphalt and the rain came, washed all their dirt, gravel away. So they've got to start back over, but they, good group of guys we've got working for us and I think we're lucky to have them.
And Harold, we are lucky for you to be out on the job keeping everybody straight.
Well.
Anybody else? Hugh, thank you, you made some nice comments earlier, Hugh, so thank you for that. Didn't get a chance to say thank you. Any other commission members have points?
I don't want to belabor anything, but I just want to bring up about those items six and 11. I just want to let everybody know I am in step with Alan Younger on those issues. I understand what the WMB committee does. They do a really good job. They're trying, they're doing the best they can be doing here, knowing, and they're doing the right things, but knowing the optics of this and somewhere in my inner soul here, I feel like when we do away with a carrot, we do away with any incentive. But maybe that's something we ought to revisit in a meeting sometime.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Well, Mr. Day, you gave me a head fake two minutes ago. Would you like to make your normal motion?
Yes, I would. I'd make a motion readjourned.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right, we got to do the roll, the lawyer's still probably on, so we've got to do the roll call vote again. Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yeah.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
And Mr. Younger?
Yes.
Folks, thank you so much for your time. This meeting is adjourned. I hope you all have a great Monday and a great week. Thank you all for your service, both the staff and to the board. Thank you.